I'm turning on my microphones.
None.
Call December 3rd, 2018, Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting to order the clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz, Brooks.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Porter.
Yes.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening intent on serving our community who have bestowed upon us the privilege and task of conducting the city's business. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom as we seek to serve with empathy and respect for all. May our commitment to serve our community give us the strength to always act honestly and well in the matters before us. Tonight, we join the nation in marking the passing of an exceptional American patriot, George Herbert Walker Bush, our forty-first president. He was truly one of the greatest Americans of the last 100 years. His courage, honesty, humility, and forthright character epitomize the best of American ideals. Our nation may only hope to see leadership like his again. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor his legacy. Thank you, please be seated. Do you have anybody for public comment? Under public comment this evening, we have no one signed up to visit with us. Brings us to number four, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of November 19th, 2018 is presented, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Frank, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Under public hearing this evening, we have none to present. Under special messages and proclamations, today formally is the happy 200th birthday of the state of Illinois. We did participate as a community in a number of functions over the course of the year, and I appreciate all those that took part in those. Under number seven, approval of expenditures, we have none. Under committee reports and minutes of city officers, please note that items A and B have been received and placed on file, which brings us to item C, minutes of the committee of the whole public, safety, and finance and personnel of November 26th, 2018, may have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Sanderson. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Minutes are approved unanimously. Brings us to number nine, unfinished business. Under A, we have ordinance 433H, a second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code, specifically animated signings in the NOPO and NB Business Districts, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So, does this ordinance then change so that anybody can put up an animated sign, or would each individual have to come to the council for approval for a special?
Ms. Del Ros.
So, what this ordinance does is that it takes all the properties that are zoned, neighborhood office, planned office, and neighborhood business, and makes animated signage a special use, so each individual property owner would have to come before city council, and you guys can decide on the signs on a case-by-case basis.
Ms. Del Ros, are they permitted currently in that district at all?
They are not permitted at all in that district right now.
So, it gives them greater latitude to do more things with their property?
Correct.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 433H is approved unanimously. Brings us to item B, ordinance 434H, a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit an animated sign within the Neighborhood Business District at 221 West Locust Street, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, ordinance 435H, a second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code concerning private residential coops. May have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Ratcliffe, third by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Snow.
So, here we go. I gotta tell ya, I'm not a big fan. People live in the city, and one of the things that occurs in the city is you don't have things like livestock, including chickens. The, if we are going to have this, I would make a lot of recommendations as far as requiring a permit, requiring a license. This ensures that everybody gets the regulations, that we've got proper installation of items, we don't have extension cords and things like that running through. The permit process would also make sure that people are conforming to all the other zoning issues and property maintenance issues, because we don't need somebody who's already got issues allowed to have another item that's gonna have issues most likely. I wouldn't be opposed to having it as a special use, so that the neighbors around have the opportunity to know that someone wants to have chickens in their vicinity. The, I talked to a number of people, and some people were great for it, and a lot of people were anti-this topic, and a lot of people in general do not complain about their neighbors because they're afraid of retaliation, and you set those people up for having issues with their neighbors, or having to put up with stuff that they shouldn't have. So, those are some of my ideas, and if, as we discuss things, I would be willing to make motions to bring those through, but generally speaking, I'd be voting this down.
There's no questions or comments? Positions held, positions thought? Alderman Porter.
Well, I think that five feet to the lot line is way too close to another property, and if I was to vote for this, I would want to make a motion to amend it to limit chickens to properties that have no less than acre of property, and limit the distance from other residences to 75 feet to the coop, because noise issues and some of the health issues and that type of thing, so that's my thoughts on it.
Okay, Alderman Brooks.
I've been trying to find reasons to deny this, but I can't. When I was a child, I grew up with a small pig that my aunt had gave me, a runt that the mother cast aside, and I raised that pig up to so far, and the neighbors loved it because it got all the garbage in the neighborhood. But then she, my aunt come in and took it to market, and on her deathbed, she asked me to forgive her, so. Anyway, I, I don't see anything really wrong with this. I would rather have five clocking chickens than five barking dogs next door to me. And dogs make a heck of a lot more than noise than chickens, I'll guarantee you that. Now, do we have a restriction on dogs in the city? Yeah, stand by and you can have your say. I just think that this is getting a little micromanaged. I say let's give it a shot, if we have problems, then you can always add to the restrictions on it, pass new ordinance discovering it, but let's look at it, and give the kids a chance. It's no big thing. I say a chicken in every coop.
Additional questions, comments? Alderman Freeman.
Thank you. We're an agricultural community, we've always been an agricultural community, though our population may have grown to call us a city, we're an agricultural community. I'm happy that our youth is interested in agriculture. I agree with some of the things Alderman Snow said and some of the regulations, and I do agree that five feet is a little close to the neighbor, but I don't think there's anybody in town that owns an acre lot, Tom. So, having said that, I agree with Alderman Brooks. I'd rather have five clocking chickens than five barking dogs, and stray cats that run my neighborhood crap in my gardens, and there's no ordinance on that. Is there any way we can get the animal control, I know they're county, to kinda, no, to kinda oversee, make sure the chickens are taken care of, make sure that nothing, no?
Animal control definitely will not be involved in enforcing a city ordinance like the chicken ordinance that's being proposed. The enforcement on that would be to the zoning enforcement officer for the city of Belvidere. Animal control is helpful in cases where we enforce, for example, some of our dog ordinances, in that if we need somebody to come take the dog from a property, they will come do that, but they cannot enforce our code, so a police officer has to go out with them as well to write any citations at that point.
Gina?
And to add on to that, if there is concern of neglect, then the Department of Ag has someone assigned to Boone County, and they work with animal control, like if there's neglect of livestock, the Department of Ag representative and animal control will go out to do the investigations, so if there's neglect issues, then yes, but yeah, otherwise, if it's just coop maintenance, number of chickens, stuff like that, it falls on code enforcement.
Can I make a comment? Okay, so, I think the challenge we have before us is that we have some strong feelings about better regulation of this issue. The one acre thing, that eliminates almost anybody from having, I mean, that's not a reasonable thing, I mean, nobody's got an acre property. The lot line thing, and having some to oversee it, but we could spend the next three hours amending and proposing amendments, would it be a better idea to table this and have those who object and have ideas, constructive ideas of more regulation, bring those ideas back in the form and present them then as a, rather than go back and forth for a couple of hours about amending this and amending that? What would the council think about that?
Alderman Sanderson, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, because I have plenty to say, and I think that would probably be better.
So, can we agree to come back to committee with some constructive ideas as to, or do you want to just vote this up or down?
Motion to table, second.
Yeah, motion is second to table, it's tabled for the time being. Okay, all those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
No.
Crawford.
No.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Seven in favor to table.
Okay, it is tabled, so, it'll come back, and people who have ideas will share them, and will try to construct something that will work if possible.
Gina?
Just so that the girls are prepared, if the Aldermen have any specific questions or concerns, please send them to me so I can forward them on. That way, they can do research and come prepared to answer whatever questions that they did not answer at the public hearing for you, or if you want examples. I just, I want to make sure that they stay involved in this process, so if there's anything that you are thinking of or have concerns, please forward them to me so that the girls can be prepared as well.
So, January 14th? That gives everybody plenty of time, and I would encourage, if you have a position, let's be constructive about it, and if there, we can find a way that, to satisfy everybody's hopes and with this, that'd be great. Alderman Snow.
Just a couple more things, that, one of the things that we do have a problem in the city is just enforcing the current codes and maintenance codes that we have, that poses a big issue. And I would be curious as to what the mayor thinks about the whole topic in general, for, against, or don't want to go there.
Well, you know, I have mixed feelings, to be honest with you. The fact that it's been thoroughly thought out, number one, I applaud the kids putting this together and bringing this forward, because this is great to see our kids involved in the, this process in the community. I too, when I grew up, you know, I grew up in basically a town just like this, and people had chickens in their backyard and they, different things, and if it got out of hand, it could be a real issue, but if it's a controlled thing, and I was encouraged that the state, state of Illinois service would be overlooking this and making sure that chickens are treated properly. That takes a lot of the issue off of our hands about this. I think also that this will be done by responsible people, and I don't think, I really don't think every other person in the community is gonna have a chicken coop in their backyard, I really don't see that happening. So, at this point, I'm, I would like to see us go forward with some great recommendations and hammer out something that we can finally make a sensible vote on, and let's take it from there, just step at a time.
Yes.
On a positive note, I'm not anti-chicken. Twenty years ago, I had chickens, I had Peking ducks, and they laid better eggs than the chickens, so I'm not anti-chicken, I just don't think it's appropriate in this particular environment.
Okay, so, January 14th, and hopefully by then, we'll have come to some constructive issues to discuss. Which brings us then to item D, ordinance 436H, a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to permit in-vehicle sales or service within the planned business district at 2195 North State Street, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Stevens?
Yes. My whole concern on this is with the Basset laws. You know, the Basset laws, they had explained to me that they train the servers to be able to, you know, look at the people as they're standing there and judge whether that they're, you know, able to hold themselves, that they're not already intoxicated, and I'm feared that in a vehicle form, they're just gonna be able to sit there. And from 30 years of EMS and fire, and have seen enough drunk accidents, I'm definitely not for this, because I don't want the chance of anyone with the possibility of being drunk to be able to purchase liquor from their vehicle.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
Well, I agree, and, I mean, I would be fine with this if it was just a walk-in liquor store, but I also agree with Alderman Stevens on the drive-through part of it.
Are you two aware that we had a drive-by, it's not against our code, and we had a drive-in window liquor store here for years, right down here where the Health Department is?
I do remember it from running around, but that was before the Basset laws and stuff, so.
Walmart, you can pick up liquor at Walmart? Yeah. Alderman Brooks, and then Alderman Freeman.
It's most of the people, you're worried about people driving, most of the people driving go to taverns, I mean, they drive a car to a tavern, or the bar, or the liquor store, or whatever else. I'd rather have a sober guy going from home to a liquor store, to a drive-in window, and then going back home, than having a drunk go from a tavern through a drive-in window and then going home. I just, I had experience with drive-in windows down in Springfield, Illinois, the businesses that was there when I was a kid is still in business today, and you know how long ago it's been since I was a kid, so, I, I don't have anything totally against them, I think it's a good, a good business proposition for someone, I don't think it's gonna hurt what you're thinking about, everybody getting killed by drunken drivers, and most of them are killed by idiots out there, so, best of luck.
Alderman Freeman.
So, you, we did have a drive-up window, and I don't think it caused any issues back in the day. If you travel, anybody that's ever traveled to Ohio, they don't only have just drive-up windows, they have drive-through buildings.
That's right, you too.
I personally like to stay with the changing times and grow with things, and not be the last person on the boat, because that boat's usually sailed at that point, so, I'm for this, I don't see a problem with it at all.
I would point out that certainly there's always a concern. The Basset training rules are to help you identify people that you should not serve, and those same laws would apply. If we're gonna look at it like this, this is no different than all these gaming parlors where people can go in and have a drink, and now gas stations are going to have a beer, and they're driving their cars. Okay, so, I, it doesn't compute to me.
Alderman Snow?
Satan, the Walmart thing, technically Walgreens has a drive-through, and they sell liquor. I don't know that there's anything on their end that would prohibit them from.
I don't know, I've never seen it, but.
From picking up, you know.
Alderman Snow does raise an interesting point, though. There's nothing in our current ordinances which would prohibit Walgreens, if they so chose, to serve the alcohol through their window. I mean, as far as I know, currently, they just handle their pharmacy that way, but there's nothing in our code to stop them from selling alcohol through their window.
And this is not by the drink, we're not serving drinks out there.
No, it's packaged goods only.
Alderman Snow?
I'd be curious if the deputy chief of the police department had a weigh-in on this at all.
Okay, thanks, I'm here representing Chief Woody, and at this point in time, I don't know what his position is on it, and I'm here representing him, so I don't feel that I would be, you know, best to be vocal on his behalf in reference to this motion.
Well, that's a way to get out of saying something.
You sounded like a politician.
My loyalty is to my boss.
I heard Alderman Brooks make a comment, as far as the drugstores, you pick up narcotics in a drive-up window, for god's sakes.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on ordinance 436H?
Mr. Mayor, I would make one comment. The application right now is for a special use law, a drive-up, a drive-up window. That special use was previously approved for this property. The property was designed for that, for that use, and nothing much has changed. Quite frankly, without tipping my hat to attorneys for the applicant, but he knows this as well as I do, a denial of that license, or that permit at this point, does subject the city to potential liability for denying a use essentially, which is granted in the past. So, I would not outright, I would not recommend outright denial of the special use for a drive-up window, if you want to condition it some way, that would be the better way to approach it, but I would not recommend an outright denial.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor approve, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
No.
Seven in favor?
Ordinance 436H is approved, which brings us to item E, ordinance 437H, a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment, a bar with video gaming within the central business district at 105 Buchanan Street, may have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, do I have a second, by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Sanderson.
Where are we at on the limit right now?
Not there yet.
We're currently at 24 that we've issued actual video licenses to, but there's about 38 special uses that have been approved. Now, special uses don't just associate with the video gaming, so, in essence, we've issued more special uses than we're allowing. So, it's first come, first served. Right now, we're at 24.
Yeah.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing, yes.
I'm just curious, the same people that own the, that own the ice cream store?
No. It is not. Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 437H is approved unanimously. Brings us to number 10, new business. First reading of ordinances are silent, but I read them into the record for the folks at home. Under A, we have ordinance 438H, a first reading, it's an ordinance levying taxes for all corporate purposes for the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2018, and ending April 30, 2019. B is ordinance 439H, a first reading, an ordinance making a levy and providing for the special service area number two tax in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2018, and ending April 30, 2019. C is ordinance 440H, a first reading, an ordinance making a levy and providing for a special service area number three tax in the city of Belvidere, Boone County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2018, and ending April 30, 2019. Ordinance 441H, first reading, an ordinance vacating a remnant alley generally lying north of Union Pacific Railroad and directly west of 315 South State Street and 319 South State Street in the city of Belvidere. Those will come back for further discussion. Yes, Alderman Porter? What? What?
You voted yes on 437H.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Okay, which brings, Alderman Crawford? Anybody else? One, and a two. This brings us to E, resolution 2085. This brings us to E, resolution 2085-2018, a resolution authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement for the creation of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority. We have gentlemen here from Region 1 to answer any questions you might have. Anybody have questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, may I have a second? Second by Alderman Brooks. Any additional questions or comments concerning the resolution? Yes. Alderman Frank.
My question would just be, because we're a smaller town in Rockford, how do we level the playing field? I mean, for picking properties to get fixed, I mean, how does that work?
Director Dunn?
Good evening, thank you for having us.
So, Dunn, do you want to come up and use the microphone, please?
Sure.
So that people home can see you. And here you go. Okay, I'm up to the joy buzzer. All right, Dunn.
Thank you. Probably, and I can go into more detail if you'd like, me too, Alderwoman, but two-part answer would be, one, is Belvidere has the same appointing authority in number to the land bank board, so regardless of your population, the four signatories to the IGA all appoint one member. Two, no activity occurs in Belvidere without Belvidere's approval, so the land bank would never come in and acquire a property, or work on a property without the city saying that that conforms to the city's plan and the city's strategy for that parcel. And then, second part of the second part answer would be that we have a pro forma that is built up by Ida, the state grant that we received, and that pro forma is divvied out based on the vote of the land bank board as projects come in. If Belvidere has a special case that can't be funded by the Ida grant, a private sector organization, a nonprofit organization, any organization can restrict funding to the land bank for that specific parcel in Belvidere, and use the benefits of the land bank to take on that property without respect to any of the other government entities, including Boone County. So, if there's a property in Belvidere that something needs to be done with, and funding isn't available immediately, but there's an alternative funding, that funding can be restricted, brought through the land bank, and the land bank and project manager acquire that property.
Alderman Sanderson?
So, if, you know, how do we make sure that there's equal opportunity for people to acquire property? You know, is it just gonna be certain banks at the land bank, or what if someone else is interested in that property? Do they have equal opportunity to acquire it all? So, I don't really understand how it works.
Sure, Alderman. So, we would never compete with private sector entity. We're going after properties where no market exists. And often, what we do is we prevent properties from getting stuck in a tax sale cycle where they end up at the county trustee. And the land bank isn't there to be a developer or a landlord. The land bank doesn't really, all the time actually work with other banks, and a well-run land bank actually doesn't bank land. The term of art is land bank, but the real goal of a land bank is to go in and clear title, and whether through judicial deed or another means, and deliver that clear title back to the private sector and establish a new market. So, if you're in a neighborhood and a blighted property is weighing down property values, or is causing nuisance issues, nuisance issues, we can go in, acquire the property, either demo it, or refurbish it, or find somebody who wants, in the private sector, to refurbish it for profit. But our goal is to, and our competitive advantage is only to clear title and deliver a title without cloud to a private sector investor or a private sector homeowner.
So, are the governing bodies, could it be expected to come up with any money for any of this stuff? It didn't seem like it when I first looked at it, but I just wanna make sure that we have you here.
Yes, sir. There's no money that we're asking from Belvidere or the other entities. We did receive an Ida grant from the State of Illinois. We're gonna continue going for additional grants. We're not dependent on the grants. That grant was the second biggest award in the state. Because we were multi-county, they really appreciated our process with it. And that money will then be allocated based on the appointed land bank board. At any time that another grant program that Belvidere goes after, or any time that Belvidere wants to devote capital money towards a certain project, they can fund the land bank directly. Before that state money, it's up to the land bank board to decide what the priorities for investment are.
Additional questions? Alderman Stevens and then Alderman Frank.
So, even after tonight, if we approve this, there's still a lot of work to do for the committee with rules, regulations, guidelines to set yet? Is, I'm still, I still thought that was still gonna have to happen with, when we appointed a board to... Is that still gonna have to be... Or is this all the rules and regulations here?
No, sir. So, Alderman, we're hoping that all four entities, Boone, Belvidere, Rockford, and Winnebago, approve the IGA before year-end. Our goal would be then, the four governments appoint a land bank board member. That land bank board member can be somebody within that government entity. It can be elected leader in that government entity. It could be a private sector individual, it could be a banker, an attorney, whoever the unit of government would like to represent the government on the land bank board. We do have a stringent no-conflict policy, so anybody typically involved in the real estate transaction process should not be appointed to the land bank board. At that time, we're looking to constitute a board in January. That board will create board policy that our organization would follow, as far as how we evaluate properties, create pro formas for properties, present properties, and then obviously acquire and dispose of properties. We don't have to have the same strategy for each property, especially when you, it's not just residential property, you wanna look at commercial property. So, we're gonna look at those policies. And then finally, we do need to have a, and Eric Sutter is gonna be the land bank director in the back, a stronger understanding of what properties Belvidere has at the top of their list. So, I would say those are the first three steps in January. I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yeah, it answered a lot of them, because I'm very interested in this, and I was at the meeting a month or two ago, when the gentleman was there, and I really enjoyed and appreciated the whole, you know, the program he put on.
Thank you.
So, I'm very interested in this.
And so, that is our counsel, that's provided by the State of Illinois. We have a local attorney, but we also have an attorney that is advising on land banks throughout the State of Illinois. That attorney is paid for also through the grant. So, it's free legal counsel. They've been behind the successful startup of the two Illinois land banks that are current existence.
Alderman Frank and then Alderman Snow?
My question is, do you have, let me restate that, is there somewhere in Illinois that it's already working, that we've got the food, or that we have the bank?
Yes, Alderwoman. So, the first was South Suburban Cook County, and that brought Eric roughly around thirty-five municipalities together. And the second is a home rule county, Cook County, the only home rule county. And so, Cook County has a land bank that serves as the county trustee, and then South Suburban Cook. We are part of a grant that awarded eight additional land banks throughout the State of Illinois, Champaign, Peoria, Coates Cities, Springfield, et cetera. And we have been told by the state that we are furthest ahead in our progress.
Are the majority of those properties blighted and abandoned and no longer usable? Is that the key to your...
So, it will always be up to the land bank board to determine the priorities on what properties we get involved in, but ideally, you wanna go after properties that have no end user, no private sector option, that are typically caught up in tax issues and liens and liability issues, and properties that have no real estate market established. You can't get a comparable property and an appraisal. So, the goal is to not use a land bank as a development tool, but to use a land bank, again, as a way to get rid of liens and liabilities on the property, and set the title up for a private sector individual to come in and either own the property or invest in it.
Thank you.
Alderman Snow?
A couple of things that I was interested in when we had our meeting at the city-county is that this isn't set up for somebody who's going in for the purpose of investment and trying to gobble up a neighborhood and create low-income housing, or housing that they can just become an investment. The other is directed toward the mayor, so tentatively, would you be the person on the board, just so we all have that clear, or do you have intention of appointing somebody else?
Well, initially, when we get all the IJs put together, we'll sit and discuss how we're gonna do that. I have no feeling one way or another, if someone in this room would have an interest in being appointed to the board, I have a couple of ideas about that, but I'm not fixed on my being the person. In fact, I think my workload's sufficient at this point in time. It might be a good idea to have somebody else who has a true interest in this to get involved. Alderman Freeman, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sanderson?
Well, on the outset, it seems pretty good. You know, I was a little skeptical about it, but it seems pretty good. I guess the only other question I have is, the Rockford area seems to have a little bit more of life than us. So, but yet, we're the ones providing the home rule for it. So, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we get, you know, evenly distributed, they may have more need, but we don't wanna have it forgotten either, you know, while we're providing the service for that area. So, I want it to be delved out kinda evenly somehow in the county, city, in each area.
Each property and each transaction will be approved by the board, and as Mr. Dunn noted, if we had a specific property that we wanted to deal with here in Belvidere, and we had somebody here in Belvidere that wanted to fund the reclaiming of that property, we could do that ourselves and restrict it, so, from the land bank. The idea is that in today's world, there are a lot of blighted properties. And this is part and parcel of looking toward a more regional approach to solving problems, because all of us have the same problems. None of us have the resources to go and form our own land banks, city by city, town by town, county by county. So, this allows us to work together to do these things. It's not based on population, yeah. They were interested in the fact that we're home rule, and I was pleased that we were able to be the linchpin of making this happen, so, there's that.
I just don't want the funds to be dissipated before they're used here also, is what I'm getting at.
Okay, I am confident that that will not happen.
I think, Alderman, from our view in the analysis we've done up until now, other than any properties that a county health department would have interest in, that are unincorporated areas, it seems to me that the target properties are within the municipal limits of Rockford or Belvidere. You have two board members from the Belvidere area, or from the Boone County area, two board members from the Winnebago County area. I, you need three votes to move forward. I think that you, I have the same concern. Every day, whether it's a land bank or another, a transportation initiative, I'm constantly trying to balance between a House of Representatives model, where it's population-driven, and, pardon me, a US Senate model, where one jurisdiction, one share. We were very deliberate, as the State of Illinois was, to make sure that if we did a multi-county land bank, every member has equal say. And for home rule, people are very, very appreciative of Belvidere's participation. But the only, and you heard this at the presentation, Alderman, the only home rule power that's being derived to the land bank is really just a disposition power. So, the only home rule power that the land bank enjoys is the ability to dispose a property like a home rule community would, rather than going to a sealed bid where you have to get an appraisal, and it's eighty percent of fair market value. In that flexibility, a city or a county can now say that we want a prop, we wanna put a deed restriction on a property. We want this property to be owner-occupied, so it isn't low housing, low-income housing strategies in the investment world. So, the land bank, whether it was just for Belvidere, or for more than Belvidere, would want that disposition power to make sure that those properties, after all that investment, they don't fall in the wrong hands.
It's the same overriding principle of the Regional Planning Commission. Everybody has a vote. Everybody has equal power. Nobody overrides anybody else, which means we're not overpowered by Winnebago County or over-county of anyone else. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor approval, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you for your time tonight, thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Resolution's approved unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and visiting with us tonight. Good to see you. Which brings us to item F, resolution 2086-2018, which is a resolution amending the sexual harassment policy as required by Public Act 100-0554. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Frank, second, by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay. Resolution is approved unanimously. Next up, we have motions forwarded from the community of the whole Public Safety and Finance and Personnel of November 26, 2018. motions of finance and personnel will be presented by Finance and Personnel Chairman Ratcliffe.
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to approve the renewal of the CY 2019 with Blue Cross Blue Shield for medical and self-funding dental for the City of Belvidere employees.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
B, motion to accept the Boone County Community Foundation grant in the amount of $4,000.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Snow?
Just out of curiosity, does this need to specify that it's gonna be used for the pavilion at the Christie Highline Park, or anything specific, or does it just go into the general fund and...
Wait, I mean, specifically, that is what it was, is this for, that is what the grant, that's why we were awarded the grant dollars, and it is being deposited into the capital fund, which is where we paid for the playground and everything, so that it all stays together.
I just didn't know if we needed to make that aware, just tossing that out there.
The grant paperwork asked for money for this project, and that's how it was awarded, so that's where it was spent. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
C, motion to approve renewing the three-year contract with Sigges LLP for auditing services.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Ratcliffe.
Aye.
Sanderson.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
D, motion to approve the 2018 tax levy request from the Belvidere Fire Pension Fund. This request will be leveled, levied as part of the 2018 tax levy ordinance.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
E, motion to approve the 2018 tax levy request from the Belvidere Police Pension Fund. This request will be levied as part of the 2018 tax levy ordinance.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Sanderson?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously.
F, motion to approve the estimated tax levy of $5,878,157, as announced by the finance director.